Welcome Lowell to the first of three forums for the candidates of Lowell City Council. Hi, my name is Jim Campanini, I'm the editor of The Sun, and this program is brought to you in collaboration with The Sun and also Lowell Telecommunications Corp. We're happy to present this forum and we hope you will stay with us for the entire evening as we will have two other forums this evening in which all 18 candidates for city council will air their views on things that are pertinent to Lowell and the region. This evening, the moderator for tonight's event will be Chris Scott, The Sun's assignment editor and enterprise editor. So, without further ado, I am going to hand this over to Chris Scott who will explain some of the ground rules. Thank you and have a good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Jim. I'd like to welcome all the candidates here this evening. To my right is incumbent Corey Belanger, Dave Conway, a challenger, Karen Cirillo, another challenger, Joseph Boyle, one more challenger, and the mayor, Ed Kennedy. As we discussed earlier, there are no opening statements, we'll get right to the questions, but you will be given an opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement. And the less people hear of me, the better, so if a candidate answers a question and one of you feel the need to respond or carry the discussion a little bit further, please give me a nod and we'll certainly allow that to happen. The more discourse, the better. So, without further ado, Corey, the first question will go to you, and what do you think it has to deal with?
I'm gonna guess the high school, Chris.
All right. So, the first question to Corey Belanger is, what are your thoughts on the upcoming ballot referendum that will be on the ballot on November 7th on the high school? And is it a valid test of where the city stands on the location of its high school?
Well, thank you very much, Chris, and thank you to the Lowell Sun and LTC for allowing us candidates to get our view out this evening.
You're very welcome.
That's a great question, Chris, and as you may be aware, the viewers at home, I was the first one to propose putting a ballot initiative on November's election we're about to have in just five weeks away. And unfortunately, I was ignored. This is probably where this should have been, Chris. It should have been up to the voters. I was unsuccessful in convincing my colleagues at the time. It might have been a little bit ahead of its time, the concept of it, and unfortunately, it did not make it the way I wanted it, because I wanted a more balanced question. Now, it is gonna be on the ballot in November, and congrats to those downtown advocates who worked very hard, and I knew, I had the utmost confidence when they were gonna get it done. I knew the whole time they were going to achieve this, and that's great. With that being said, it is, I wish it would be a little more balanced, Chris, okay? It specifically says, "Do you support an extensive renovation at its current location?" It can't be a downtown or Colley, it has to be yes or no by state law, as we all know. It would, if, now, I would have put 100% stock into this if it had just been worded a little different and said, "Yes, I will support a downtown extensive renovation," or "No, Colley, I would support a brand-new high school at Colley Stadium." If that was the case, I would be on board 100%. But with that being said, so, if it's, let's just say, you know, very unanimous by 2/3 or more downtown, I may have to give it consideration, but I'm not, you know, but I'm not changing my mind, I'm not alluding to that at this time, but if it's 2/3 or more, I may have to give it consideration, Chris.
You've kept your promise, you want a minute. Dave Conway.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Jim, and the Lowell Sun, the LTC. It's a great question. I think that the, it should have very definitely been on the ballot. City council is, when you take a look at it, it's the, it's the largest, the most expensive project for a high school in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we're also talking about the second-largest high school in the state. And I firmly believe that the voter should have weighed in on it. It's as simple as that. And I certainly congratulate the group of people that went out, and they went out day after day, week after week, to collect the signatures. And I think what it is, it shows the city has rallied around and they're obviously very, they're very upset with the situation that, that they didn't have the opportunity to weigh into the situation. And I think that, you know, when you get, when you keep in mind something, the voter, they're the bosses, and we, as public officials, work for those bosses. And to be quite frank with you, sometimes we might not agree with our bosses, but at the end of the day, we have to listen to them. And they want that on the ballot, and I congratulate them for that.
Thank you, Dave. Karen?
Well, I was one of the people going out every weekend getting signatures for that referendum question, and I, and I supported 100%. And what I would say is, the city council voted for the high school to go to Colley, the school committee voted for the high school to go to, to stay downtown. I said, "Well, now, let's hear what the voters have to say. Let's hear your voice." And that's really important to me, to hear the voice of the people, and that's another force that drove me to stand out there every weekend and get signatures, because I wanted that question on the ballot. I wanted to hear what the voters had to say.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Mr. Boyle.
Hi, hi, everybody, Joe Boyle. The question was about the wording of the, yeah, please.
Sure. What are your thoughts on the, it's very general, what are your thoughts on the upcoming ballot referendum on the high school? And this is, this is key, and I'm not sure, in all due respect to Corey and to Dave and Karen, that they answered this, but is it a valid test of where the city as a whole stands on the location of its high school?
I really understand, I really do understand where this question is coming from. In isolation, on its own, the language of the ballot question might be, if somebody knew nothing about what was going on in Lowell, the language of the ballot question might not entirely lay out for them what the situation is and what the public is really being asked to consider here. However, I think this is the most vocal, most public discussion of policy I have ever seen in this city. I think the voters understand what the stakes are. I think they know what's, what's being asked of them on this. And so, I think that, putting on my English teacher hat and doing a little editing here and a little editing there on the language, I probably could, but I don't think it's really all that important, because I don't think anybody's gonna be misled. I think they understand that a yes is going to mean they support the downtown and a no is going to mean they support the other side.
All set?
I'd also like to say that I am broadly a big supporter of greater democracy in the Lowell governing process. I feel that a lot of decisions have been made in this city among a group of friends, groups of friends in a quiet room, rather than through truly public democratic process, and I have been pleased and inspired by the level of public participation and involvement in this question, and I hope to see more of this in the future. I'm sure, maybe there have been a few bumps, maybe this hasn't been, in all instances, the most elevated public discussion, but like I said, I think this, this is sort of something a little bit new for the city of Lowell, and we'll get better.
Okay, I gotta cut you off. I gotta cut you off. Did you hear the bell?
I did.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes, I do think it's a, I do think it's a valid question. I think a yes on the referendum is, is, means that the, the people want the high school downtown, and I don't think it has to be 65-35, I think if it's, if it's 50.1 to 49.9, if that's the way it goes, I think that's the way it should be. I do think this, it's pretty clear from the question, and I think it's worth pointing out that when the question was crafted, they had to come up with a question that the city council had rejected. They couldn't change the question around. So, we were on summer schedule at the time, so for them to come back to the city council and ask for a different question to be on the ballot that was maybe, maybe a little bit different, a word a little bit differently, would have meant a two-week delay, and that would have been a two-week delay for that, for that group to collect those signatures. They collected over 7,000 signatures, but certainly, they thought that two weeks back then was valuable, and I have to agree that it probably was at that time. But I do think that it's a valid question, I do, I guess it's a little bit ambiguous that, you know, what does a no vote mean? Does a no vote mean that you don't want the high school downtown, that you wanted a Colley? Or does a no vote mean that you don't want the high school at all? I think that could be solved by just having a summary underneath the question, as you often see on state referendum questions, but in a discussion that I had with the Law Department yesterday, I don't think that there's an intention to allow for that summary, which I think is, does a disservice to, to the, to the people. For, you know, we, all that time and energy has gone into putting the question on the ballot, there should be a summary that, that explains what each, each, each answer means.
So, just a quick follow-up question on that. Who proposed the summary and who made the ultimate decision not to put it on?
The Law Department is saying that there's no, that there is no, because it's not a state ballot question, it's a local ballot question, there's no vehicle for putting a summary on there. I, I think probably it's worth a review of the, of the state law and also probably asking the Secretary of State if that's absolutely true, but that's the interpretation of the Law Department as I understand it as of yesterday.
Who proposed, though, to put the, to put that disclaimer on?
Well, I guess what, what I'm saying is that there should be a summary to explain.
Yeah.
For, if you're gonna have the ballot question, everybody, there shouldn't be any ambiguity. People should understand what, what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, and that could be solved by simply putting a summary of, you know, when you often see it under a ballot question, a yes vote means this, a no vote means this, and that, at this point, isn't going to be, isn't going to occur in November.
Okay. All set, Mayor?
I'm all set.
We have two responses, from Corey then Dave.
Thank you again, Chris. No, I would like to respond. I think the mayor proved my statement, what I alluded to earlier, that, I mean, he didn't say this word for word, but it proves, the, the question is not fair. It's very much in favor of the downtown location. And another point that the mayor's mentioning is that the question specifically states an extensive renovation at its existing location. Now, we, the folks at home are all very aware of the signs that are all around the city, "Support Downtown, Option 3," and it's on the front lawn of pretty much everybody here to my left. Now, "Option 3" involves eminent domain, okay? That's not included in the referendum, which is only budgeted at $2 million. And anybody that knows any, just a tad about real estate, it's going to far exceed $2 million, and that's an extra cost you're throwing on the taxpayers, so they're given the illusion that "Option 3" is cheaper than Colley Stadium, and it is not. I'm talking from a structure standpoint only. There were transportation issues that are arguable, there are other issues, but the structure itself, you have, the "Option 3" is involved eminent domain, there's no reflection of that in the ballot referendum, which is gonna cost millions extra on top to the taxpayer. So, the taxpayer's gonna go to the booth with the illusion that their, that "Option 3" is cheaper than Colley, and it is not.
Okay, I gotta cut you off. We have a question coming on cost, and we can address some more of that.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you. I, I think that in the last few months, there's been a lot of information through the Lowell Sun and other, and other sources come out, and I think the people are acutely aware of what's going on. I've talked to people from all over the city, and they do understand that this is, this is one of the most important projects, because it's going to affect generations to come, it's gonna affect the city for many, many years. And I think that the people have educated themselves on it, and anybody that I talk with, they certainly have an opinion, whether it's Colley or whether it's downtown.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Karen, did I say?
Um, yes, I would also like to follow up. Being that, being that I was one of the people getting the signatures, I saw where all those signatures in the city came from, and it was, it wasn't just from one area of the city, it was from every single corner of the city of Lowell. So, I feel that this will be a good indication as to what the people of Lowell want and where they want their school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mayor?
I'd just like to say that I totally disagree. I do know a tad of, a bit about real estate, and I disagree with Corey. I think that having $2 million in as a contingency for the eminent domain is perfectly appropriate. I think that, you know, to, to say that the, that Colley is less expensive than the downtown option is completely, is, is not correct at all. It's not correct, because you have to consider with Colley all of the mitigation that you have to do in terms of traffic improvements and sidewalks and, and infrastructure and so forth, and annual busing costs, operating costs, that, that all has to be factored in, and that makes Colley be way more expensive than downtown. I also think that the Colley group, if they wanted to, they had the same opportunity to put their ballot question on, and the city council also had an opportunity to correct the question if they wanted to. So, to wait until it's too late to do anything and, and all of those volunteers have spent all of that time over the course of the whole summer, and weekends and everything else, and now to complain about the question when, when the city councils had an opportunity to do something about it is just, is wrong.
Are you, just, I wanna interject here. You've referenced this twice, you're referring to the city council's, I think it was a 5-4 vote over the summer against putting a referendum on, right?
On, on that evening, on the evening of the 5-4 vote, there was, one of the speakers came forth with a petition from 10 taxpayers to ask that the matter be put on the ballot. The city council rejected that. The referendum, the non-binding referendum could only, they, they had to stick with the question that was rejected by the city council, so they couldn't just make up their own question. They had to, they had to stick with that question. But the city council could have corrected that question if they wanted to at any time, and they never did. But I just think it's wrong now to say, "Oh, the question's invalid and, and it's unfair" when the Colley group had the same opportunity to get signatures and put their own question on the ballot if they chose.
Well, we have an opportunity to talk more about this and different aspects of it, like the finances.
I have a feeling, that's fine.
Because I just hate to have just one minute.
My editor and I came up with about 17 questions.
Good.
Thinking of more as we speak.
We might not get by the first one.
Right. So, second question.
Sure.
Second question. This goes to Dave Conway. Is there a limit to how much the city and the state should spend on a new high school before the cost is considered prohibitive and the process should be restarted? Is it 375 million, 400 million, 425 million?
Well, if, if we go back a few years ago, I was one of the signatures on the, the original proposal to the state so that we could take a look at renovating the high school. And that was downtown, there was no other, there was no other spot that was mentioned, no other location. I think that when, there is certainly a concern, because when we're talking $350 million, whether it's 350 at Colley or whether it's 350 downtown, people are still worried about whether they can actually afford that, because there are other things that have to be dealt with, like, for example, the, the police station. If anybody has walked in the police station, you'll see that if any one of us owned the police station, it would have been condemned. So, how much is the police station gonna cost? I, I have no idea. But I think that what we need to do at this particular point, they're certainly talking about the location. The location is something that's extremely important. It affects the city in so many different ways, especially if it was put up in, in Belvedere. And I wanna make a point with this, too, is that, you know, the, the people talk about the location up in Belvedere as being, you know, the people being selfish up there and they don't want in that spot. I'm a firm believer that there is no way on earth that you can take a project like that, which is equivalent to seven schools, and put it in any one of the neighborhoods without a tremendous negative impact, and I think we have to keep that in mind. But, going back to what you were saying, that, again, we have to, number one, the location, number two, we have to take a look at what can we really afford, and that number might change.
I don't think that number is actually known yet. Karen Cirillo?
Um, well, I, I feel that we are on the verge of cost prohibitive with this, with this high school, because I see all the other, other priorities in the city, for example, some of the, the police station and some of the fire stations, and so, I, I feel that we are at the cap, and I, I'm, I, I wouldn't want to spend anymore. I think, I checked the costs and we do have contingencies in the, in the construction cost for the, for the options, which is good, I'm in construction, so I know. And so, so I, I would like to see it capped at the cost that it, that it is currently, because there are other things in the city that really need attention. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boyle?
I believe that there is an upper limit to the amount that Lowell taxpayers should be asked to put into the project. On the other hand, I do not feel that it is the responsibility of a Lowell city councillor to try to put a cap on the amount of state grant money that's coming into our city for a project. I feel rather quite the opposite of that. I'm quite fond of bringing in state grant money into our city for the project and would certainly not consider an option that brings in more state grant money into our city to be undesirable, because it's bringing in more state grant money. I'm a big fan of bringing in federal grant money, bringing in state grant money. I did it when I was in the DPD, and I hope to be able to do it as a city councillor. Like Karen, I think that we are getting close to the upper bond of what's reasonable to ask of the Lowell taxpayer. I have also, however, looked at the, the construction contingencies on the downtown project, and I find them to actually be quite generous. There is an understandable concern out there about running into unexpected problems in a renovation project, and we all understand how that works. But I feel that the size of the contingencies on the downtown project are very generous, and I also feel that the very extent of what's being proposed in this renovation, they're going so deep that they're unlikely to run into really large, unexpected costs.
We'll come back. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, there's absolutely a cap. I mean, when we started this project off at the beginning of the feasibility study, we were looking at, we, you know, the talk was, "Well, maybe this high school might, might be as much as $250 million," and people were like, "Whoa, $250 million, that's a lot of money." But we're also looking at 80% reimbursement at that time, and that's what we were told, which meant that to the city, it was gonna be $50 million, which, if you can get a $250 million high school for $50 million, then that's, that seems like a good deal. And I think that really, that's the number that we have to be looking at and that everybody should be looking at, is not, not how much does the project cost, how much does it cost the city of Lowell?
Right.
So, for instance, the Colley project right now, I think, is at like 49% reimbursement, which is a far stretch from, from the 80% that we were told, and, and downtown, it's, I'm sorry, 55%, I believe, for Colley, and in the low 60s for, for, for the, for the downtown projects, which is still way off from the 80% that we were, that we, we were under the impression that we were going for at the very beginning. So, there'll be at, at some point, and that's why I think the city council, I and other members of the city council have been asking repeatedly for the administration to give us figures, not just on what the high school will be itself, but what are those extra costs? What, how much is that, does that amount to? Because I think that's gonna be, you know, a very large number. And I think before any city council makes a vote on the loan order, which is the, you know, the, the vote on the money, which will require six votes, they need that information. But I also think that in order for voters in November to make a educated vote on the referendum, that they should have that information, or at least as much of it as, as we can put together, and as reliable as we put together. And I think at this point, nobody has any confidence in the numbers that have been put forth by Skansker and Perkins Eastman on the, on any of the high school options.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna let Corey respond, Dave, and then we'll get back. Corey?
Thank you. I think we're all in agreement on this, Chris. I talked about finances throughout this process, and I said repeatedly, as the mayor alluded to, when I signed on to this project, we were looking at approximately $50 million, 80% reimbursement rate, and now we're down to 55%, okay? And the costs have went up $100 million. And that is in a large part due to the timing. There, there is a boom going on, okay? There are hundreds and hundreds of cranes in Boston, I've been told, despite Boston developers. For a Boston developer to pack up and move his cranes to Lowell is going to be a surcharge. So, I think, with, the taxpayers are being gouged. I think the costs of these constructions are abnormally high than they should be, and I have a cap, yes. I, I, right now, we're looking at about, taxpayer aside, as the mayor alluded to, I mean, we've got 350, whatever it may be, we're concerned what it's going to cost the taxpayers of Lowell. And "Option 5," what I selected, a Colley Stadium, is about $155 million. Okay? If it goes up much higher than that, when we get actual costs, if it skyrockets considerably, I may, I will not hesitate to take a step back and, and support the downtown location. I'm not gonna stuff it down the taxpayers' throats, because I voted for Colley Stadium, which I did. There is a cap, I'm sensitive, but we have other capital projects, we have 30 other schools we have to worry about, we need, we're in dire need of a police station, as Dave Conway stated. That's about $50 million, the last price tag we got, we pegged the site out of Tana Street location for that. We have too much, I'm not going to strap the taxpayers, but if it increases much more, I will not hesitate to take a step back, support the downtown location. However, I will not be supporting eminent domain, just as, just as I did to be consistent on Route 38, the mayor alluded to, the, the infrastructure costs, the street widening. There, there's no plan to widen streets, and, and there is no plan, okay? And that involves eminent domain, and I am not supporting eminent domain, whether it's on Route 38 or whether it's a dentist's office, to be consistent.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Dave, do you want another shot at this?
Yeah, just, just very quickly, just to pick, point out a couple of things. We had a joint subcommittee between the city council and the, and the school committee back a while ago, and, and during that time, they, the speaker did talk about the fact that we have, I believe it was 17, 17 schools or 15 schools that are at what we call middle-aged, which is 35 years old, which I think is, was a bizarre comment, but it's, apparently, it's true. And when I look at this and I, and I say, because the, the reason why he brought this up is that he, he was talking about the fact that the city of Lowell is going to be faced very shortly with some decisions. If we take a look at those new buildings that were built back in the 80s, excuse me, they need new heating systems, new roofs and so forth, and to be quite frank with you, in the city of Lowell, we do not have something that most corporations have, and that's a PM system, a preventative maintenance program. We just let things go, and then eventually, it runs into a problem. Look at the high school, for example, they're always talking about the, the roof is leaking. I went down there to visit the other day. Well, the roof has been leaking for 15 years, and they said, "Well, you know, we, we have to tear this building down." Well, you know, if they fixed these things in the past, we wouldn't be running into the problems that we have right now.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else on this particular question?
I had, I wanted to follow up on something that the mayor said, and that's about the lack of information. I feel like, especially on the Colley project, there are, there's a lot of information that should have been looked into, that studies should have been done, and we should, and the voters and the, that public officials should at least have ballpark estimates of what we're talking about for the transportation improvements that are required, what we're talking about for road widening, what we're talking about for busing costs. We were, I'd, I'd used the word quibbling earlier about whether the language of the ballot initiative is providing voters with not really a fair understanding. I, I am much more concerned about them making decisions on this without having that information about these hidden costs on the Colley project.
Mayor?
I just wanna add, I think that, you know, Dave Conway brings up a good point, and, you know, Lowell's not the only one, but we should have replacement reserves, we should have money built in that can be used for maintenance along the way, and, and in the long run, I think that that would serve the city better. And it's easy to say that during good economic times, but that's the first money to be cut out during difficult times. And it isn't just Lowell, I think every community in the, in the Commonwealth, probably every community in the United States of America does the same thing. If they've got money, they'll put, they'll put it aside for a rainy day, but when the rainy day comes, they use that money. And it isn't money that's used to keep the, the capital facilities up on a regular basis, and that's really what we need to do. And the only way to do that is probably by ordinance, you know, making it be a requirement that the city council have to budget a certain amount of money, a certain percent of the budget would have to be set aside for deferred maintenance on a, on a regular basis.
I'm going to go rogue here for a second, ask one more question on the high school, starting with Karen. You've all mentioned excessive costs, not enough information out there. Do you see any scenario in which the high school project fails to get off the drawing board and it crumbles? That downtown doesn't get done and Colley doesn't get done?
No, I, I don't, because Lowell needs a new high school. So, I, I see one of those two options, they, it has to happen. So, I am for the downtown 100%, and I feel that no matter what, one of those options So, I am for the downtown 100% and I feel that no matter what, one of those options has to take place for the city of Lowell and for our students.
I'll repeat what I said in the previous question about the cap on the costs. If these construction costs that Council Belanger brought up earlier, if they keep going up and the, the total cost to the city as a result on the project keeps going up, I could foresee a possibility where it would simply be putting the city too far behind the eight ball to do it right now. And it wouldn't leave us with the space we need for other important capital projects, both on the school side and also on the city side, like the police department. Were that to happen, we would still need a new high school. We would still need to either build a new high school on the current location, renovating the building, or do some other project to provide a new high school. And we wouldn't be able to put it off much longer. We need a new high school. We ought to do it now and I certainly hope we are going to be able to.
Mayor Kennedy?
We, we absolutely cannot do nothing. We have to do something. And the reason that we have to do something is the last time that the high school was, went through accreditation, it was cited for the facility and for, you know, deficiencies in the, in the facility. So, that's kind of what, you know, where the whole thing started and got off the ground, the whole high school project. So, something has to be done because the next time we go for accreditation, it can't be that we're not doing, that the answer is we're not, we haven't done anything to address those deficiencies. So, something has to be done. Now, there is, there is a baseline option that, that is not one of the options presented, but it would be, and it still would have MSBA participation. That would cost the city about $70 million. That would just take care of the major building systems, you know, new roofs, new HVAC and probably some cosmetic stuff. And I'm not sure what else is in there, but it's a much cheaper option. But I, I think, I think as far as the, as the Colley option goes, there is something that's going to be required because of the number of cars that will be generated by the Colley site. It's going to trigger a MEFA study. That MEFA study, when it's, is going to be all-inclusive. And when that MEFA study is done, and it will take, my understanding is it's going to take about a year to complete. And when it's done, you can't just take the study and say, okay, thanks. You have to do all of that stuff. And that MEFA study will include even the replacement fields that were, that have been designated as a result of the Article 97 legislation several months ago. And it will include Route 38 and what has to be done on Route 38, not just for Lowell, but also for Tewksbury too, because Tewksbury will be impacted. And everything else. It's all-inclusive, it's a, it's a big study, it will take 12 years to complete and there's no getting away from it. There is no way to escape considering those extra costs at Colley, no way.
Thank you. Council of Belanger?
Thank you. Chris, once again, I think we're all in agreement. Failure is not an option here, okay? This council has worked far too hard on this issue. Kids deserve it for generations to come. They deserve what is, what is going on down that high school. Is it abomination, okay? We've all taught it, we've seen the science lab, it is archaic. The situation there is horrid. And something has to get done, as the mayor alluded to, accreditation is on the line. So, if costs skyrocket, yes. And the mayor sort of stole my thunder, that base renovation has, is about 70 million. And the, and the reimbursement rate creaches up to close to 70% on a base renovation because everything is academic oriented. You know, there's no reimbursement for, for pools and other, quote, noneducational items on the high school. That's what follows this project up. So, a base renovation has a higher reimbursement rate and it gives the city more flexibility to do the other schools and the police stations. So, no, we're going to do something, Chris. I assure you, we need it. And that's what, as I'm canvassing, I explain that to the taxpayers, they are worried about their taxes most certainly going up. But this has to get done. The council, one thing we all agree on is that we need a new high school and that includes the candidates. We're all very unselfish in that respect. So, no, Chris, we're going to get a new high school. You're going to see something down there. If I settle for a base renovation, then that's, I'm 100% on board.
Challenger Conway?
Yes, thank you. I don't think it really is an option that we sit on it and do nothing at all. Needless to say, a project has to go forward. We have to take the high school at this particular point and, and I've been very upfront in saying that it needs to stay down, downtown. And yes, we definitely need extensive renovation. But I want to say one thing. We've just spent a number of minutes here debating Lowell High School and we have a referendum question on the ballot. We've got people, we've got city councilors against city councilors, neighbors against neighbors, we've got relatives against relatives. And why? Tell me why? As far as I'm concerned, it's been a debacle from day one. This should have been rolled out in a much more professional manner. The numbers should have been there. If this took place in any other profession, people's heads would roll. It's as simple as that. And I think it's a shame that this is, that the problem, it wasn't rolled out correctly. So, therefore, there are so many half-truths that were flying around and as the mayor said and eloquently said it, when you take a look at, at Colley, look at all, look at all the improvements that have to be done. The infrastructure is going to be, that cost right there, by the way, that's, that's cost is to us.
That's right.
That's cost is to us. That has nothing to do with the building. The cost for busing, that cost is to us another $3.2 million. We don't have to pay a dime downtown for the busing, but out of Colley, we're going to pay $3.2 million. So, there's a lot of additional costs that when you start packing that money on, that is packing taxes on, onto the citizens of Lowell. And as far as I'm concerned, that is absolutely not fair.
Either one of the incumbents want to respond to that?
No, I think that's...
Okay, we're going to move on to another topic.
Yeah.
Another high-profile topic. I think we're starting with Mr. Boyle on this one. Mr. Boyle, should Lowell adopt a different form of government, one that gives representation to individual neighborhoods on the city council?
I strongly support the principle of moving in the direction of ward representation. I, living in Lowell, you live in your neighborhood and you know your neighborhood better than the other neighborhoods. You know it down on a granular level, you know the details to a greater degree than you know other parts of the city. And I think our government would function better getting that level of feedback that, from every single one of the city's neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Kennedy?
I think, I think we need to be a little bit careful and I think we need to be careful about it for this reason. We have a city manager government that works very well. And the reason it works very well is because the legislative body, the city council, if they're unhappy with the executive, you can just get rid of them. So, in general, the executive and the legislative branches of local government are always in sync. If they aren't in sync, the legislative branch can take corrective action and put them in sync. With a strong mayor government, it doesn't, it's not necessarily that way. The mayor is elected independently and the, and so is the city council. And oftentimes, there are people that sit on the city council that think that they should be the mayor. So, a lot of times you don't have, it doesn't work in sync necessarily. I think that if you're going to have district councilors across the board, you need to also change the executive. You need to have a mayor type of government. But I do think this, I think that Worcester has had a hybrid of district, of at-large councilors and district councilors. And they've had it for 30 years. And it seems to work well there. And I think that that's something that we should look at so that there would be, that would allow us to keep the city manager government and, and to have district councilors as well as at-large councilors. The only reason that I have an appreciation for, for planning government, for city manager government, which I didn't have years ago, is because of how it stays in sync. And I think, you know, true progress requires that there be synchronization on that. You know, you see it, you see it in Washington, nothing's working because nobody gets along down there, but that doesn't happen with planning government. And so, so anyways, I would favor taking a strong look at a hybrid that would include district councilors and at-large.
Thank you, sir. City Councilor Corey Belanger?
Thank you, Chris. Currently, the city of Lowell has the Plan E former government and I happen to think that it's working. Okay, Chris, we've elected the first Cambodian-American city councillor in the year 2000 or 2001 with Rithi Young. We've elected Vesna Noon. And we have the first state representative in the Commonwealth, representing the Highlands, Radimah. So, it can be done. From my research, Chris, what I see going on across the Commonwealth and those cities and towns that have made the switch to district representation, really has not got much done. Okay? To do this and do this effectively, okay, there are 11 wards in Lowell. To do this and do this effectively, you would have to go, not have to, but to do it right, you would have to go 11 or 13 councilors. I mean, Lawrence has nine and has district representation, but we're not Lawrence. Okay? Everything is going great in the city, we're not perfect, but I think we are, this city council in the last four years, everything is going in the right trajectory. And I, things the way they are, I just think that, you know, Greenfield has 13, Springfield 11, Holyoke 13. You've got much smaller communities, they don't get along, not much gets done. Again, there's, there's no cap on the number now, I want to be perfectly clear. But to do it and do it right, you would have to go to 11 or 13 councilors. And my fear, Chris, is not much would get done. And secondly, it's, I don't think it's going to achieve and make the council more diverse. Now, we are all in favor of making, not only the council, but our boards and commissions more diverse any way we can. Absolutely, I'm certainly in favor of that. And the managers administration have led initiatives to, in sight to try and get minorities to apply for board and commission. We've done that. And we are, we are fairly diverse on the board and commission, but I'm going to go cautiously forward on this, but I am open, Chris.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Thank you. I think it's extremely important that the neighborhoods weigh in on this because I think that people I've talked with, they, they feel that, many of them feel that they have been left out. And I think that when you take a look at all the, all the neighborhoods, who knows the neighborhood better than that individual that lives in that neighborhood? And that's why I know that city councilors often will go and, and visit with them and talk to them and so forth. But the ones that actually live there on a day-to-day basis, we have to listen to them. And the perfect example was right in Belvedere, where the, the city councilors as a whole did not listen to the neighborhood and the neighborhood did something about it. And I think that's a shame that it actually has to, it has to get to that point. And I agree with Mayor Kennedy on this totally. I think we should take a look at perhaps a hybrid model that, that might work. But I also want to caution too, that in government, quite often, what we want to do is we want to just jump to a conclusion. I think what we need to do is we need to sit down and really think this out and do it right the first time. Again, you take a look at the high school project, that's a perfect example of how things were thought out. So, if we're going to go in a, in a different direction, which I am certainly open to, I think we have to think it out carefully, but I think it can work.
Thank you. Karen Cirlo?
This is, I guess this is the thing about going last. I am in total agreement with Mayor Kennedy and Dave Conway regarding a hybrid system with district and at-large. And they explained it perfectly, so I'm good.
Okay, well, the next question, it's appropriate that this one goes to Mayor Kennedy.
Okay.
And then the challengers can, can kind of take a little...
One small point on this.
On the, on the diversity?
Okay, now, every neighborhood gets to weigh in. Chris, this council makes sure of that. On the high school, we had forums at the senior center, the CMA, every neighborhood group in the city had forums, okay? The district representation, we're going through the same thing. We just had one at the senior center. Outreach, there is no shortage of outreach on this council. So, I take, I take that personally. We are reaching to every nationality, every community and every neighborhood on every issue. That's what we do. So, no one is left out, I can assure you. No one will be left out. So, I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Fair enough.
If I could, the, that's, I think that that's true. I think that everybody that serves on the city council serves the whole, the whole city at large. But the first city, the city council that I ever sat on had five members from the Highlands. One member from Pawtucketville, one member from Sacred Heart, two members from Belvedere. Now, you've got, now it's kind of lopsided for Belvedere. Senable, in both of those instances, although they've had city councilors at different times, did not have, don't have a city council right now and did not have one back then. So, those neighborhoods, because they don't have one, they feel left out. You may feel like you represent them and I feel like I represent them as well, but that's not how they feel. And so, that would be part of the reason or the rationale for going to the hybrid system.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. But to this point, I have not, I have not seen that in feedback. If I, that comes out to that and I go to every corner of the city and that's the feedback I get, I will reconsider. But to this point, that's not, but the mayor could be right. Time will tell.
Last fall, councilors voted to raise their annual stipends to $25,000 from '15 and the mayoral stipend to 30 from '21. Do you feel you've earned that increase? And please be specific. And challengers can just share their thoughts on the increase.
Yeah, having served as mayor for almost two years, I think the mayor should be getting more.
It would be right to wait, Mr. Mayor.
Because it's a lot of time. I, I think the reason that, that we looked at the salary change was because we had had, we had gone through several election cycles and in each of those cycles, we did not have a big field of candidates. So, that we were having a preliminary and just to eliminate one person. So...
And this preliminary eliminated five?
Five, which I think was, was a healthy, a healthier field. The first time that I ever ran, there was a field of 34. I think the second time was 26. This time was 23. This, I'm talking about back in the, back in the 70s and early 80s. This time was 23, but I think that we're getting better. So, I think it paid off in terms of the city council. I was disappointed to see the field for school committee because what we did with the school committee is doubled the salary, actually. And so, they've gone from $6,000...
Six to 12,000.
...up to 12,000. And I would have expected that there would have been more people, particularly with this high school issue, there would have been more people that reinforce school committee than, than the field that we have. I just, I don't really understand it. I guess I think that just parents that would be interested, that would have kids in the system, why aren't they running for school committee, even if it's just for four or six years?
I have a following question, Corey.
Yes, I'll dovetail on the mayor's comments that, yes, part of the, the spirit of the raises, Chris, was to attract better candidates. There were a couple past elections, there was a low field, if you will, there was a low, low number of candidates running. And an election is about, close to $100,000 to eliminate one candidate. That was two years ago. Of course, we have a more healthier debate now. The high school has really got our community engaged and that's the silver lining, I guess, with, with the high school. But yes, I want to be perfectly upfront and honest with the viewers at home that I voted in support of the pay raises and I supported it. That's because, two reasons, we can attract more, I think, professional candidates. It is very difficult for a working family, for, for anybody to come out and dedicate this time and give, people have to be compensated in this day and age. So, I think we've seen that to a small degree, maybe not to the satisfaction. And this council works very, very hard. Please understand that. I mean, I myself, I've been a very, very proactive councillor, frequenting neighborhoods, businesses and events. It's almost an everyday thing. Most months of the year it is. I mean, there are quiet times, like anything else. So, in the grand scheme of things, on a $365 million budget, it's $130,000 for both the city council and the school committee to net a better gain, in my opinion. Thank you.
It would be nice to hear the perspective of a challenger now.
Well, thank you, Chris. I, I was very surprised when I took a look at the numbers. And first of all, I'm going to disagree with a couple of colleagues in government. The fact is, I don't think people run because of the salaries, whether they run forward or not. I don't think that's part of it. I think they run because, deep down inside, they have a love or they have a passion for the city and a passion for politics too. And when I ever saw that the city council gave themselves, that's actually a 67% increase, by the way, which I thought was, was not correct. You shouldn't have, you shouldn't have given, they shouldn't have given themselves, and that, I shouldn't say themselves, it's the next term, a 67% increase. And as my colleagues say here, they talk about how hard they might work and they haven't received a pay raise in a long time. Well, there's a lot of people that are watching this show right now that work very hard and have received little or no pay over the last few years. So, again, I think that the city council should set a tone for the city. So, again, I think that the city council should set a tone for the city. Here we are talking about taxes and so forth, on and on and on, and then they turn around and give themselves a 67% raise. And I will not take that raise if I'm elected.
The raise or the salary?
I will not take that raise.
Okay, very good. Karen Cirillo?
Well, I feel that the city council works very hard. It's, it's a, it's a second job. It's a second, actually, I feel it's a second full-time job because you are at, as a city council member, the people's, the people contact you all the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that, to me, is a second full-time job. And I commend the city councilors for working so hard. And I, I, I am for the raise. So, that's, that's the way that I feel.
Thank you. Mr. Boyle?
I am an example of what the councilors were talking about. I am somebody who is only able to be in this race because of the increase in the stipend that they passed. I, I don't live on Andover Street. I don't come from money. I am not running because I am looking for the salary. I am running because I want to serve this community. But I wouldn't be in a position to do so and to dedicate the hours that this job deserves if, if it were not for that stipend increase that was passed. I'm raising two kids. I have one that is about to go off to college. I want very much to serve my community at this time. And your vote made it possible for me to offer my candidacy to the people of Lowell for them to decide.
There's an example right there, Chris. Thank you, Joe.
Very good, Joe. Mayor Kennedy?
I'd just like to emphasize on the point that Dave sort of brushed over, which is that the city council did not vote itself a raise. They voted a raise for the next city council.
Of which you're a member of?
Well, I'm not a member of it. Nobody's a member of it until...
November 7th.
We see what happens in November 7th.
It's looking good, though, I must say.
We are hopeful.
18 candidates running theoretically, there could be nine new members of the city council theoretically, so...
All right, it's 10, it's almost 5:07, so we have to get to closing statements. We'll start at the opposite end with Mayor Kennedy.
Well, I'd like to thank the Lowell Sun and the LTC for hosting this event. My name is Ed Kennedy. I'm a candidate for reelection to the city council. I've been a lifelong resident of the city. I'm a commercial real estate appraiser by occupation. I have a master's degree in public administration and I'm the current mayor of the city. This is my second year and I would humbly request one of your nine votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Challenger Boyle?
Thank you. My name is Joseph Boyle. I'm a Highlands dad, an urban planner and an educator. I came to the city in 2001 with my wife to be part of this incredible community and this incredible process that I learned about while I was earning my master's degree in urban planning from UMass. The reinvention and revitalization of an old urban city for the post-industrial era. In four and a half years as the city's neighborhood planner and is in five years on the planning board, I have seen the city's revitalization up close and have come to understand the principles that underlie it. Principles like being a walking city, a city that's welcoming to immigrants, respectful and effective community policing, a strong local banking sector and historic preservation and looking to our history as a guide to our future. I'm running for city council to ensure that Lowell's government and Lowell's city council remains true to those principles that have worked so well for us. They will guide me in my decision, but they've guided me in my decision about the location of the high school and they will, and they will guide me in all of my decision-making issues across the board. I ask for your support on November 7th. Joe Boyle.
Karen Cirillo?
Hi, thank you so much, LTC and the Lowell Sun for having us this evening. My name is Karen Cirillo. I am a resident of Centerville. I live right on Christian Hill. I want to give back to the city of Lowell what it has given to me, which is a healthier, stronger and better life. I moved to Lowell eight, seven years ago and the reason why was because eight years ago, I was diagnosed with an aggressive cancer and Lowell General Hospital and the city of Lowell saved my life. And it's the small things. It's the hello, it's the good morning as I'm going off to the, to the cancer care unit or when I'm going home. And it's really important for me to give the city of Lowell and you, the people of Lowell, a healthier and better life. So, thank you. And I request one of your nine votes come November 7th. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dave Conway?
Yes, my name is Dave Conway. I'm a candidate for Lowell City Council. I was born and brought up in Lowell. I went to Lowell High School. And I'm married with two children, two daughters and two granddaughters. And Lowell has certainly been extremely good to me and my family. I've spent 37 years as a teacher and a housemaster down at Lowell High School. I also spent eight years on the school committee. And I am now presently the principal of the Hellenic American Academy. So, education has been, has been a big part of my life. That's why when I decided to run, when I took a look at the high school, because I spent so many years there, I realized that the importance of having the high school's location was, was paramount and to keep it where it is right now for so many, so many different reasons. And obviously, the major reason are the students. They have equal access to the high school. So, again, I'm Dave Conway and I want to thank LTC and Lowell Sun, Chris and Jim, for putting this on and giving us the opportunity to actually give a debate. And this is, I think, the first time I've seen that, so I applaud you people for that. And I also asked the voter for one of, one of your nine votes on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cory Belanger?
Well, thank you again, Chris, to you, the Lowell Sun and our good friends at LTC. And thank you to the viewers and the candidates and the mayor. Thank you for this evening. It's been a very, very healthy debate. But I'm City Councilor Cory Belanger. I'm running for reelection to serve a third term on the Lowell City Council. And to the viewers at home, I want you to know first and foremost, your city is a safer, more vibrant city than it was just a few years ago. Regarding public safety, we currently have 250 sworn police officers. And as a result, crime, gang activity, violent crimes, gun-related crimes are all down significantly in the last four years as a result. On the opiate crisis, I mean, we're all, the headlines, obviously, all the high school these days, but we, ladies and gentlemen, we still have a drug problem in this city. And as chairman of the mayor's opiate task force, through initiatives that I put forth to the city council on the task force, opiate-related fatalities are down almost 50% here in the city of Lowell in 2017. That is nothing shy of remarkable from all the men and women out there that are doing such great work. I'm very proud of them. On education, we have met or exceeded net school spending four years in a row. We take education very, very seriously. We're going to take this Lowell High project very, very seriously. On economic development, we have things really rolling in this city. In the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, we have signed three parcels that will have shovels in the ground next year. And how long have we been waited at that site? The Judicial Center is 12 months into construction. The city council has created over $9 million in new tax revenue the last four years because of business-friendly incentives to attract businesses here. We let the manager manage. So, please, I'm Cory Belanger, running for reelection. I ask for one of your nine votes. You'll find me number one on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cory.